To the May 12, 2020, 2021 City of Brentwood Planning and Zoning Meeting. To kick us off, let's, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free and honest. Thank you. First item on our agenda would be roll call.
I've got it. Yeah. Sherri Bilderback?
Here.
Mark Favazza? Rebecca Jacobs? Jeff Moore? He's here.
I'm here.
Yeah. Paul Moran?
Hart Nelson?
Here.
Don Nürnberger is here. John Ritter? Lisa Scherling?
Here.
Tom Shiftley?
Here.
We have a quorum. This is Chairman.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the April 14 meeting. Seven one had an opportunity to review the minutes.
Chairman Shiftley, those minutes were not ready yet. They are drafted, but I didn't have a chance to review them, so they were not in your packets.
So that will be tabled until next?
To the next meeting, correct.
Next is old business, which we have none, and then next is new business. The first item is case number 21-04. It's the rezoning of property from PB Plan Development Overlay District to B, single-family residential district at 8817 Powell Avenue. The petitioner, I believe, is Mr. Davis, and I see he is on. He's currently muted. We may need to make Mr. Davis a host of the meeting if he has anything to present and share on the screen. Mr. Davis, you want to take us through your application? You're not on mute, but your lips are moving, and we can't hear you. You're on the phone. It looks like that one is muted, and your computer is not muted. If we can try to unmute you. By the way, this is our last Zoom meeting, which is for everyone, I think.
Go for that.
No. Can you hear us now? It looked like it might went off the speaker.
Mr. Davis, can you hear us? Can we, can you talk so we can see if we can hear you?
Say something.
I think what the problem is, is I'm his sister, and I'm on as well. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
So maybe I'll just log off and just have him talk. Maybe that'll help, because he's well in a different mic, Davis.
Oh, okay.
So let me log off, and I'll just call in.
Ms. Kirkenmeyer, would it make sense, or do we need a motion to switch the order so we could go right into Meridian Medical Technologies while the Davises are working things out, and then we could do them next?
Sure, because I think the applicants already joined for the second petition. That's a good idea.
Great.
One thing he can do is log out and then come back and see if that brings you, gives you your sound.
Maybe you can try to work that out with Mr. Davis in the chat feature. And we'll get started with case number 2105. Site development plan for construction for modular building addition at 2555 Hermelin Drive. The applicant is Meridian Medical Technologies. Is anybody there on the call?
This is Mickey Hansel. I'm from Farnsworth Group. I am the engineer of record for this application. Gary Kipfield was from Meridian was supposed to join, but I don't see him on the call right now.
Ms. Hansel, would, so is, is he the one that was prepared to walk us through the application?
I can, I can walk you through the application. I don't see the option to share my screen, though.
We might need to make you a host. Did that do it? Great. I see you're the co-host now. You should be able to share your screen.
There it is.
Great.
Can you see?
Yes.
Okay. Yep. So, as you said, this is at 2,555 Hermelin Drive. Meridian Medical is proposing an addition to their modular building. It is a similar modular building tucked up into this northeast corner of their property. They are elevating it similar to their existing building at this end of their property to be at the same level on piers above the floodplain. So you can see that they're, they're connecting to their platform in this corner with doorways and a hallway, and then this area is going to be a break room for their employees that currently utilize this space. So there's no increase in the number of employees, employees using this space. It's just additional room for them to utilize for their, their processes in this existing building. Again, they're elevating this, so there's no change in contours. There's no change in parking. It's in an existing area that is already covered with pavement, so there's no real change in impervious area. And then I think the only other thing we have, so again, and it's just similar to what's out there now as far as modular building with the, like aluminum siding that they have on their existing building. That's foundation plans, so you can see that, you know, that there is elevated on piers similar to the other building. And that's more of a structural plan. Lighting.
This is Gary Klipfel. Can you hear me now?
There's Gary.
Okay. So I'm here if you've got additional questions of what we're doing here.
Ms. Hansel, do you want to open up some questions from the commissioners, or did you have more to show?
I think that's, that's about the extent of the project. So yeah, if there are any questions, Gary and I would be happy to, to answer any questions.
Great. Open it up to the commissioners for any questions? We did have a question in the chat. Is there any impact to the surrounding natural areas? I'll let you answer that.
Yeah, no, so there, there isn't. The creek, as you're probably aware, is on the west side of the property, but this addition is completely on the east side. Again, the cover there is already paved, and so there's no, no decrease in landscape area. There's no increase in imperviousness, so there's, there's no effect on the, the natural area around there. We've already completed the floodplain study that's required since this is in the floodway, and because it is elevated on those piers, we have been able to prove that there will be no significant rise in the floodwaters, as is required to build any addition onto this building.
Okay, great. Any, any other members of the, of the public or any neighbors on the call have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, do we have the staff report as well?
I know.
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Kirkenmeyer, we get the staff report on this.
Yes, thank you. As the applicant had expressed, there really isn't many changes to the existing conditions back there. The site coverage is going to remain at the same percentage that it is now. Obviously, adding the 1,700-plus-foot addition will increase the building coverage slightly, but that really isn't a requirement to have a certain percentage of building coverage in the light industrial district. So I did check with the fire department, just because, again, it is, it's kind of a tight site back there, and just wanted the fire department to review it. What I could say about his comments is that this, again, this proposal for this addition, it's not going to make anything worse. It's not going to improve access either, but it's not going to cause any more issues or anything with just being able to access the property. The access, obviously, will still be kept intact. And so I would say everything that the petition has already described pretty well covers the project. In terms of the floodplain development permit, that is correct. There was a different engineer that the company had that worked on the floodplain development permit last fall, and that one was pre-approved, if you would. I think when we looked back at that fall permit, though, there might have to be just one modification on it that kind of fits in with this plan. But as she said, this is an elevated structure, so therefore I don't see any complications to be able to make that, that one revision or modification to the floodplain development permit. The elevation certificate hasn't changed. So, yeah, they just, we've been back to Meridian quite a bit of time over the last year. They've really been put in a situation, and if anybody went ahead and maybe did a site visit and checked it out, there are some temporary structures right now in terms of a tent and also kind of another break room, and that simply has been because of the course of COVID, that they've just had to really follow regulations and, and obviously just space out, like all of us have had to do. So if you've gone back to the site, there are things that we have issued just temporary permits for, and those will be removed here this summer after this addition and so forth gets built. So overall, the staff would approve the, the site plan improvement as proposed.
Great, thank you. I see Commissioner Nelson has his hand up.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I understand, Ms. Kirkenmeyer, that the floor will be above the floodplain because it'll be raised. Do we know about overall elevation? Is it going to change the overall elevation compared to the other buildings?
It's gonna, I know Gary now has been able to join us, so it's going to stay level with the other elevated modular structure, but I don't quite know the height. Maybe Mickey or Gary.
HVAC, I think I also understood that HVAC is going to go on top of the new break room as well. Is that a move, or is that just HVAC to support this new room?
That's HVAC to support this room only. It is, the existing modular building right now has a large raised platform above it where the air handler, there are air handlers and other equipment on it. This new facility is not going to have this platform over the top of it, so it's going to be almost identical in height to the existing modular building without that, without that structure above it. So it's actually going to be lower than the existing structure, because we're not putting that extra steel platform above it.
Understand. Thank you, Mr. Klipfel. Mr. Chairman, just one other point. I will need to recuse myself from this boat. The college does have some pending business potentially with Meridian, and I know the president and his family, so I'm going to recuse myself out of an abundance of caution.
Understood. Thank you. Any other questions from commissioners? Seeing none. Would any one of the commissioners want to make a motion regarding this application?
I would, Tom. Mr. Chairman.
Please go ahead.
I would like to recommend the Board of Aldermen approval of this application as submitted with the provision of verifying compliance with the floodplain regulations for the site, and that they're all met, all the current floodplain regulations are met.
Great. And do I hear a second from the commissioner?
Yes.
Motion's made by Ms. Bilderback, seconded by Ms. Sharon.
Correct.
And then turn it over to Mr. Nürnberger for a roll call vote.
Gary Bilderback?
Yeah.
Mark Favazza? Rebecca Jacobs?
Yes.
Jeff Moore? Paul Moran? Paul is on. See? You have to unmute yourself, Paul. Hart Nothing?
Stay.
Okay. John Nürnberger is yes. John Ritter? Lisa Scherling?
Yes.
Tom Shiftley?
I don't know who's the commissioner.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Yeah. So motion passes.
Great. So the motion passes. Any next steps, Ms. Kirkenmeyer, to advise the applicant?
This will be taken to the Board of Aldermen at their June meeting, which they go in their summer schedule, so the June meeting would be June 21st, and I will get in contact with them with more details at that time.
Lisa, do we have to make it be first and second readings at the, since they have the shortened schedule? It's the same meeting?
If, I mean, I think that would be appropriate if the Planning and Zoning Commission would like to go ahead and make that motion, given the summer schedule.
I think we just have to change the motion, the people that made the motion to add that to it.
Or just making a new motion just on that. That would be fine, too.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion accordingly, as outlined by Mr. Nürnberger.
Great. A second?
A second.
New motion made by Ms. Bilderback, seconded by Mr. Nürnberger. I don't think any of you roll call. Can we, any objections from anybody? So that's, that motion has been approved by acclamation. Thanks to everybody from Meridian on the call. You're more than welcome to stick around and watch the rest of our meeting, but if not, good luck to you with your project, and thanks for keeping your business in Brentwood. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. So we're, we're going to go back to case number 21-04, the rezoning of the property from PB Plan Development Overlay District to B, single-family residential, 8817 Powell Avenue. Mr. Davis, let's see if we can hear you.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah. Good. Finally.
Right. Do you have anything you want to screen share?
I can here. I'm, I switched to the iPad, so it looks like I don't have access to share, but I did have the plot plan to share.
We have that in our pack.
Okay. Okay. So what we're looking to is we have a, our parents' house that we have that's on a double lot, and we are looking to rezone it to plan or to residential B, to be able to sell it as a double lot to build two homes on to. So that's, that's basically what we're trying to do, is get it rezoned from Plan Development to residential B for that purpose.
And let's open it up for commissioners. I believe this, this request does not align with the comprehensive plan for that portion of Brentwood. Commissioners want to jump in, or do we want to go right to Ms. Kirkenmeyer? Liz, you want to tell us about this?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Davis had contacted our department, I guess, a couple of months ago, and we, we talked through different factors that are to be considered when property is to be rezoned. And so we did refer to the comprehensive plan, and I think everybody here that's still on the Planning and Zoning Commission, or probably on the commission when we undertook rewriting our comprehensive plan back in 2018. And if you remember, one of the more debates, if you will, that I think we had during that process was with the eventual redevelopment of the Brentwood Boulevard corridor. You know, what would be some of the constraints to that? And so the whole issue, which has, which was discussed in plenty of other meetings or when we've had other petitions along South Brentwood Boulevard, is that there just is not a lot of lot depth to work with. And again, a lot of Brentwood Boulevard, there were a lot of smaller parcels that were actually designed to be just single-family lots, and then the mix of commercial kind of came in. So at, at the end of that process, or as a result of that process, there really wasn't much change from the 2018 comprehensive plan from the 2006 comprehensive plan. And if you recall, we ended up leaving, leaving the, the depth that we were considering that would be needed for quality commercial redevelopment at around the 350 to 400 feet back from the right-of-way of Brentwood Boulevard. So that is one of the factors to rezone, and as what was already stated, when you look at rezoning property, that is certainly something that you should do is reflect back to the comp plan, because that is the strategic vision for the community. So that would be one issue maybe for the commission to discuss and to review. And with keeping the property at 8817, zone still for Plan Development, as well as there's another single-family home at 8813 Powell, and then you have really still what's still used as a single-family house that, that borders the frontage of South Brentwood. But if you would take those three residential properties and include the property at 8817 Powell, that gives you about that 350-foot of lot depth to work with. So again, that is a consideration or a factor to look at for the commission. Otherwise, though, as Mr. Davis had stated, the reason that's driving the rezoning would be as if it was, we turn back to be single-family residential, then their interest, the family's interest is to go ahead and subdivide that into two legal B-single-family lots. And as Mr. Davis said, they went ahead and gave us a minor preliminary subdivision, and it would be possible to do that. It certainly would be still wide enough, this parcel itself, in order to be subdivided into two lots that would meet all the B-single-family requirements. So just to be clear, though, on this, tonight it is the step just to rezone the property, although really appreciate that the Davises have put the minor preliminary subdivision together. It can't be acted on yet, because, one, the property's not some B-single-family, but also, two, there is an existing house that's on the property. So unless that property is actually razed and demolished, then, then they can't apply for the subdivision either. But that's pretty much what captures, I think, what the interest of the family is and what was included in the staff report.
I'm going to turn it over to the commissioners for any questions. Just a point of order question, Ms. Kirkenmeyer. If there are none of the commissioners who would make a motion for this rezoning, we just sort of, what happens next?
If there is no motion, then it would just, it would die for the lack of a motion. Still, though, it would not stop the process unless the petitioner actually withdrew. So it would still then be moved forward to the Board of Aldermen, but without a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Great, thank you. Commissioners? Mr. Nelson has his hand up. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just my understanding and making sure, I obviously was here for the 2018 comprehensive plan, but just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, it was also PD in 2006. Is that correct?
That's correct. I did notice, and maybe the Davis family can kind of elaborate on this, I never could really go back and research when the property would have gone from being single-family use to the Plan Development. There wasn't ordinance that's on file. It goes back to the early 90s. I think it's ordinance number 3144, but it really is kind of a moot point. It doesn't really pertain, I don't think, to the rezoning request. But being the family business and the business that they're in, it was actually an ordinance that was kind of an agreement between the Board of Aldermen at that time, and then for the Davis family to be a vendor in the parks and so forth, and, and I believe sell ice cream novelties and things. So, but I didn't find any other ordinances pertaining to that particular parcel, or even we did a search on 8813 Powell as well, so.
Thank you. I think one more question, just, Mr. Davis, for you, is have you had, or have you had any interest commercially? I guess I would just say that I'm a little loathe to immediately, only a few years after we've redone the comprehensive plan and continue to demonstrate with, with all the input, the city's interest in getting a larger mixed-use development there, but understand the frustration if there's no offers, that you want to do something with the property. Have you had any interest? Has there been any effort? Or, Ms. Kirkenmeyer, if you've heard anything as well?
Yeah, we, we do have interest in the, the property only if it's subdividable. There's a developer that works around Brentwood, and they, they actually put an offer in to buy it and then went to this, approached the city about subdividing, and that's how we got to the point we're at right now.
So there, there's interest in purchasing it, but for residential, not for mixed-use or?
Oh, yes. Yes, yes, correct.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much.
Ms. Bilderback has a hand up, and there is a comment from one of the neighbors, and we will get to that. Go ahead, Ms. Bilderback. Oh, you're on mute.
I'm muted. Turn it off.
I keep, I keep hitting the button, I swear.
We can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. It's so funny, because it thinks I'm muted, even though I'm not muted. It's very odd. Anyway, so thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the point of order that you had talked about earlier, procedurally, kind of over the time that I've been on the commission, the way that's usually played out is that there's a motion in the affirmative, because all motions have to be in the affirmative, and then they've been, they've been sent on with a negative recommendation. I don't actually remember where we've let one die for lack of emotion. I mean, there may have been one, but the more common thing has been for us to handle it that way. So just a piece of historical information, in case it's of interest to anybody. And I don't, I don't think I have any particular, particular questions about this. I mean, and I'm trying to look at it and look at the surrounding zoning, and I definitely remember the comprehensive planning discussion, so it's, it's kind of a tough situation, because the comprehensive plan, obviously, is, is an issue, and it was a major discussion point with massive amounts of public feedback and comments. So I don't have any particular questions, so at this time, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, thank you. There's a neighbor, Michelle, who has put a, a comment in the, in the chat. Her comment is that she strongly supports that it stays residential. And I just, just to clarify to the neighbor, it's currently not residential. What the Davis family would like us to do is to rezone it to residential. So that's, that's what we're discussing. It's, it's currently PB Plan Development Overlay District.
Mr. Chairman, just one more thing. Again, I apologize for being a little slow on a Wednesday. It's not a Monday, but my understanding of if it were rezoned- But my understanding of if it were rezoned, uh, to be, um, that would basically increase. We're talking about the setback to the east, the requirement. So we have commercial across the street. So that's, there's no setback there, but we're talking about, um, it would be the eastern setback if that property were to be developed. Is that correct or am I, am I misreading that? Am I looking at the map wrong?
I guess, I'm not sure what the question is. Um, the eastern property line of the subject property?
Correct. Well, if there was a development, sorry, it would be the western part of the development. If there was a development on Brentwood, then my apologies, that's where I'm getting confused. If there was development on Brentwood, it'd be the western setback then to this residential property would be the increase.
Right, yeah, we always, um, and that really, that hadn't changed either, um, from a comp plan process. Or there's been no changes to the, the code itself. So you're, I think what you're talking about is that 50 foot buffer. And that was kind of the compromise that was reached by, um, those that participated in the comp plan. And, and kind of worked through this debate a little bit. That, um, if this was going to remain in a commercial zoning district. That there would be, the requirement would stay in place. That it would require a 50 foot buffer between a commercial development and the residential property. And that there would be strong adherence to it as well, so.
Yeah, the part that I was looking at, sorry, from staff report is if the subject property is rezoned to single family residential. The commercial property to the east along Brentwood Boulevard. So it would be the western buffer of that.
Right.
Would be required to establish a 50 foot wide buffer yard when future redevelopment occurs, okay?
So that is another consideration, since you wouldn't have just a, a clean line in between. But rather you do have to keep that 50 foot buffer. Is that if this property is rezoned to, to be single family, then yeah, that should, that shifts that buffer requirement further over. To the east, to the next parcel towards Brentwood Boulevard.
Thank you.
Question to, uh, Ms. Wilkins. As far as the members of the public who would like to speak during this meeting. Uh, how, how do we technically do that? Uh, see a one, uh, person named Kelly Reese, uh, would like to speak. I'm sure. Okay, oh, you might just need to unmute Kelly Reese.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Ah, fantastic. Um, I, I'm a neighbor, um, on 8837 Powell Avenue, same side of the street. Um, we are strongly for splitting this, turning it back to residential and splitting this parcel and building two new homes. We would love to have two new homes with homeowners instead of renters. Uh, we have a very, what I would consider an issue on our street with home maintenance. Um, with a lot of rental properties that Greg Iverson owns. Um, and he's buying up every little bit, it seems, around us. Um, and we would strongly prefer that this lot be turned back to residential and new homes. That will bring the, bring the value and keep the, um, street traffic down too. We have a big problem with people cutting through, um, at the intersection of Manchester and Brentwood as well. Um, so we would much prefer that it stay as much of a residential area as possible.
Thank you. Commissioners?
I had one question. Uh, I know it has to do with the size of the properties. I'm just envisioning, are they going to be like two-story homes with a pretty much a big footprint or whatever? Are, do you have any idea what their plans are for that?
I, I don't, we didn't get into that kind of detail with them, so I, I do not know what, what their plan would be.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Do we go to the staff report?
Yeah, I think then the staff report, I'm trying to see if there's really anything else to add. I think we've covered everything. Again, all the, uh, factors to consider when property is to be rezoned. We like to put that in, we haven't really had a lot of rezoning requests over the years. Um, but where those, where those factors come from are, are things that have certainly held up. In courts, state and federal courts. So that's kind of always just a good thing, I guess, to kind of reflect on. But again, if, if it was rezoned and, and the intent is to subdivide under current be single family requirements. It does look like it could become a two lot subdivision. And the only other thing I guess I want to add, um, at this point was about the procedure. I did find something in the code. So just so that you all know, like what motions to make and what actions to take. In a rezoning in particular, so you've get, the commission gets a certain amount of days, 60 days. From the time a application is received in order to take action on the report. If the commission fails to take any action in 60 days. Which would also mean that if you just fail to come up with a motion or second a motion and vote on it. What it says in accordance to section, uh, 400.570. Is that the commission fails to act on the petition within the 60 days. It does say, "The Board of Aldermen shall consider the application recommended for approval by the commission." So, um, that would then automatically go with an approve, with a recommendation of approval to the board. Um, I believe Ms. Bilderback's comment though about that, uh, action tonight from the board has to be in the affirmative. That is in the case of like Board of Adjustment, but not with the Plan and Zoning Commission. So another motion the commission could make would be to go ahead and to deny the rezoning petition. And vote on it and, um, a reckon, recommendation then to deny could go to the board. So, uh, if you get any other questions, I can try to clear that up. But that's what is, uh, right in the code for rezoning petitions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Nelson had a hand up first and then we'll go to Ms. Bilderback while says a thing.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I was gonna simply comment that I do believe we owe the Davises a straight up or down on this tonight. I don't think that passing the buck is appropriate. Um, I will also say that, you know, unfortunately, I believe we just completed our comp plan. I believe we need to support our comp plan, but do believe that they deserve a vote. And, and again, just taking no action on this is not appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Ms. Bilderback?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, basically, I, I understand our Planning and Zoning Director Lisa was saying with regard to. Motions being able to be in the negative, but we just simply have never done that on the Planning Commission in the entire time that I've been on the commission. So I'm still a little bit uncomfortable with that. I think people get confused a little bit with their voting on. If you, everybody knows if you, if you recommend to, for something, rather than having a double negative. You know, if you put in a motion, the positive is people believe it should not be approved, then they vote against it, it's really clear. But I think sometimes it can be a little bit more confusing for people if you make an emotion to deny. It's just a little, but I mean, I'm open to however folks want to do it. And having just been through the comprehensive plan, I concur with Mr. Nelson, unfortunately. And understanding what the residents are talking about. And, you know, I have issues on my own street too, so I completely understand. And it's, it's common across the city of Brentwood and actually in all municipalities. And at this, at the same time, having just gone through this and been a part of that comprehensive plan process. So recently with the massive amounts of public input that we had from people who were on residential streets. And people who, you know, didn't back up to commercial, but people who did back up to commercial. I mean, the entire breadth of the community. And having just passed that, I, I think that, you know, it's a rock and a hard place. But I think in this case, you know, leaving the, the zoning, uh, as a plan development consistent with a comprehensive plan. Is, is pretty much the only real option we have, like with the comprehensive plan being so new and, and what we just did. I mean, if it was a 20-year-old comprehensive plan and we hadn't looked through it, you know, that might be different. But at the same time, these are issues that we've grappled with over the last 20 years. And everybody finally came to an agreement on what it is. And in some cases in the short term, it may be challenging. But sometimes it's challenging to do the, the hard thing and the right thing.
Well said. So this is a difficult situation. But we are here to. Influence planning and zoning for Brentwood for the greater good and the greater good of the community. And that's with that comprehensive plan, which was very comprehensive as not only a document. Uh, but a process to put together that document with lots of input from lots of residents. There was another hand up and then she just dropped off. Oh, Lisa Sharon, I saw you had your hand up.
Yes, I think I just echo some of the comments that Mr. Nelson and Ms. Bilderback and you just made. I think we're in a tough spot here, but my concern is if we change the zoning on this particular parcel in this particular street. What does that mean for our ability to uphold the overall spirit and intent of the comprehensive plan? Because I think, you know, we're going to get back into this jigsaw challenging design with future development. So while I completely have, uh, an understanding and empathy for the concerns that the applicant brings. And the surrounding neighbors, I think we're in a really tough situation. And we have to look more broadly at what was the overall intent of the comprehensive plan.
Agreed. Well said, and it's been, uh, well said and, and here we are. So given the discussion, uh, given the head nods and given the situation. Do any of the commissioners, are there any of the commissioners prepared to make a motion? Ms. Bilderback?
Karen, are, are you all right if I make it in the affirmative?
Hey, well, let's hear, let's hear it, I think so.
Chairman Shipley, I'm sorry to interrupt and member Bilderback. But I do think there is one other attending now that does have their, their hand up. Um, if, if Karen Smith wants to, does Karen Smith have a question or hand is raised? It could, because it could have been up for a little bit, I'm not sure, so.
I'm sorry, I apologize, I did not see that.
So, so this is Karen, is it okay to talk or I, I didn't know what. Your procedures where that fits in.
Go ahead.
So, uh, so I'm Karen Smith and I, I live on Harrison. And even though I, um, my thoughts are not in, um, I think probably along the lines of what you all feel. Or, or what you all have been discussing, um, as a resident. Um, I have always, um, been pro, uh, maintaining our, um, streets, the, the resi, as residential. Um, and the more, and not having, you know, businesses encroach back into our residential neighborhood. So I'm all about preserving our residential areas. And I know as part of the comprehensive plan that was made, Plan Development, um, or PD. Um, but we, you know, it, that was also kind of attempted and, and in, in my area a little bit as well. And I don't know that people always understand what happens with a plan development. Because at the time, people are like, oh, there are no developments. And, and then, you know, you know, people kind of get comfortable with being planned development. Then all of a sudden, there is a plan development and, and then we end up with commercial coming back into our residential area. So I don't know that people always understand. And I think that's probably going to be, when we do these plans in the future, really, really important. Because, you know, Brentwood keeps being, um, I know an area where people want to, want to redevelop. And, um, I'm just really concerned with, you know, the flavor, the nature of our, our neighborhoods changing with more and more development. You know, being pushed further and further back into our neighborhoods. That's all I had to say, thank you.
Thank you.
And then Chairman Shipley, um, Kelly Reese's hand is still raised, so I'm not sure if she was.
Yeah, I, um, d- does it matter at all the context of like, what happens if it doesn't? Get changed? That basically a house that's very old, that's hasn't been kept up. Will sit on this lot until maybe someday down the road, there's a commercial development. Because right now, there's nothing planned for it. There's no commercial development. Somebody's got to continue to go around and buy up everything before you can actually develop the land. So, does that get factored in at all to the decision? Or is it just basically because the comprehensive plan says that it needs to be part of the plan development and part of the buffer? It is what it is.
Yes. Ms. Bilderback, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, before, I would like to make a motion and before I do, I would like to, to ask Lisa for clarification. Lisa, so I, I ultimately, because of the, the reasons that I stated in, in my discussion. And am not supportive of this proposal. So would you prefer as our zoning administrator, um, like I could make that motion, a motion to deny, like you said. Um, that's just out of practice from, from the format in which we've done it. But if you're saying that that's what our regulations are, then I'll state it in that way. Otherwise, I'll just make an emotion and affirmative.
Well, it just gets stated in the staff report and in the minutes then that gets, uh, forwarded to the Board of Aldermen. It's just if it's, what is the, the outcome of the recommendation? Is it approval or is it denial? So, um, I, I still feel like in the last few years, we've had definitely things that still were denied and just were forwarded with that. This is a recommendation that goes to the board. So unlike, again, the Board of Adjustment where it's judicial. And again, they have different sets of rules they have to follow. But whatever really the board is, is comfortable with, just make the motion clear. So that everybody knows that however they wanted to vote, that they're sure how they're voting on the matter.
Right, and depending on the format in which the motion is stated then, I think would be, um. A reminder of what a yes and no vote means would be very helpful. So with that said, Mr. Chairman, I would like to recommend denial of this proposal, uh, based on our comprehensive plan.
So a motion has been made by Ms. Bilderback to, uh, deny this application. Uh, is there a second, another commissioner?
Second.
And the motion from Ms. Bilderback has been seconded by Mr. Nelson. Uh, Mr. Nurnberger, can we do a roll call, please?
So just to make sure that everybody knows what is voting yes mean?
Vote, from what I understand.
Okay.
Means that the commission is voting yes to deny the application to change the zoning. From Plan Development to Residential.
Correct.
Thank you.
You ready for a roll call?
Yes.
Sharon Bilderback?
Yes.
Mark Fafaza? Rebecca Jacobs?
Yes.
Jeff Moore? Paul Moran?
He's on mute.
Oh. Hart Nelson?
Yes.
John Newenberry is yes. Lisa Shurling?
Yes.
Motion passions, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nurnberger. Mr. Davis, I'm sorry, uh, processes, what the process is. Uh, wish you luck with the property and, uh, with the estate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, next item on our agenda is. The nomination of officers, uh, for planning and zoning. And as you know, I was the, uh, vice chairman of the planning. I've been on planning and zoning, I think about five years. I was the vice chairman, uh, for about two years. And our chairman, uh, Michael Daving moved from Brentwood in February. And I became the accidental president or the, the officer, the accidental, uh, chairman. I've enjoyed being chairman. Uh, the meetings are, uh, less stressful for me than they were in February when I was suddenly in charge of the meeting. As it turns out, um, our house is on the market. And I read everywhere, it's the crazy sellers market, everything's selling today. We've been on for four days, I'm a little nervous about that. But I think we are going to sell our house. And for that reason, um, I will not seek or accept a nomination to be the chairman of the Planning and Zoning. Even though I enjoy it, I'm going to be moving and there's, there's no reason to, uh, have, not have continuity on the, uh, commission. And with that said, I would like to make a nomination. And as I understand it, just to, uh, check, uh, process here, Ms. Kirkenmeyer. We're making nominations tonight and then the vote will be next month, correct?
Correct, that's what's stated in the code.
Great, so I'd like the minutes to reflect that I am nominating, uh, Hart Nelson, uh, to become the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And, and it has been accepted. We all, the other nominations we need are for the vice chairman, chairperson, and for the secretary. Can I, any nominations for the vice chair?
Do we have any other nominations for the chairman?
Oh, yeah. Hearing none. We'll move on to nominations for vice chair.
Although I don't see him tonight, I would, I'm sorry. Ms. Bilderback, you had your hand raised, and I wasn't following.
I would like to nominate John Nurnberger.
Accepted.
So Mr. Nurnberger has been nominated as vice chair. Anybody else want to make a nomination for vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Favazza, although I know he's not with us this evening. He's having some internet connectivity.
Great, so we have Mr. Nurnberger and Mr. Favazza nominated for vice chair. Last nomination we need is for the secretary. Mr. Nelson?
Although we'll see, I would like to nominate Ms. Bilderback, if she would be interested. I'm so used to having John there. I'm confused now.
Thank you. I actually served as secretary when I first was on the commission and was vice chairman for 14 years, so I think I've done my stint as secretary. But I would like to nominate Paul Moran for secretary. And he, his internet keeps going out, so he, but I just texted him, and he said that he would do it. So he accepted. The only reason he's texting me is he happens to have my phone number, and his computer thing isn't working, and his internet connection isn't working. And since this is our last Zoom meeting, it wouldn't really matter anyway if he was secretary, because you'd be able to hear him because he would be in person.
Great. Any other nominations for secretary? Okay. So Ms. Wilkins, did you, were you able to capture all of that for the minutes?
Yeah.
Were you good? Great.
And then I think also somebody can nominate at the next meeting as well, if there's anybody that wants to. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that.
Okay, thank you. Next item would be Aldermanic Report. Do we have any Aldermen, Alder people on the call? Seeing none. Next would be City Planner's Report.
So I do have an announcement as well. I have turned in my notice to resign from the Director of Plan and Development position here with the city. So my last day will be June 11th. And really, the, it's just kind of time for a change, and I'm trying to dial back a little bit from some other things kind of going on and just trying to find balance in some things right now. So I just wanted to say how much I appreciate working with all of you. You've been a great commission to work with, great individuals as well. And I can't thank you enough for just your support and just again, everything you brought to the commission.